For those of you who I haven't seen yet, Happy New Year. So I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors here in Palm Desert. Today is January 11th, 2022. And before we begin, I'd like to make some COVID remarks that are standard remarks. I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted as permitted under AV361 and Board Resolution 2021-43 in an effort to protect public health, prevent the spread of COVID-19, and because state and/or local officials are recommending measures to promote social distancing, the public may view this board meeting online or virtually. The public may also attend the meeting in person. Meeting's being streamed live on the district's website at cbwd.org. And as stated on the agenda, members of the public who wish to comment on any item within the jurisdiction of the district or any item on the agenda may provide comments in person at the meeting or via Zoom. And I guess if we had any general public comments received yet, but we'll take them later at the meeting as well, right? We don't have anything right now. Okay, so we will have a board member, I believe, attending remotely, Vice President Estrada. And so we'll make sure that we give him ample opportunity to participate. I'll call on him directly, and all of our action will be by roll call vote. And with that, would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which has stand as one nation under God into this world.
Also, just appreciate everyone wearing their masks. Current state requirement for indoors. So that's good.
Let me find it. It's been a while.
Roll call, please.
Yes, good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
I'm here.
Thank you. Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
No, it's okay. All right, so we have all five here. Now we have this resolution 20... Is that the right number? We're not giving it a 22 number?
So we're taking the recommendation, Mr. President, to take action to affirm Resolution 21, 2021-43, to state that the findings are still in effect.
All right, okay.
Permit AV361 remote.
All right, so we're affirming a resolution that we've already passed at our meeting. I got you.
Yep.
All right.
Other recommendations.
And we do this every 30 days?
Correct.
That is correct.
Okay, is there a motion to approve that?
Affirmation.
I'm sorry, affirm the resolution?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada. Director Estrada.
Aye.
Thank you.
There he is.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that is affirmed, and we can continue to meet as we do.
Correct.
That is correct.
For another 30 days. Do we... Are we aware... Do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments for today's agenda?
No, sir, not to my knowledge.
No.
Nor I. Okay, public comment. So this is a opportunity for public comment on any matter that's not appearing on the agenda or on any item on the consent calendar. Please address the board at the podium, limit your remarks to three minutes, and if you wish, state your name and address for the record. And I believe we do have some folks planning to comment today.
We do, Mr. President. First up, we have Michael, Mr. Michael Nowacki. He did provide a written letter, which was distributed to the board yesterday afternoon, and is also included as part of the record.
Thank you. All right, good morning.
Good morning. My name is Michael Nowacki. My residence is at 42594 Lealeas Drive in Palm Desert at the Oasis Country Club. I'm a candidate for the Oasis Board of Directors. For an undetermined period of time, certain members of the Coachella Valley Water District staff have been conducting clandestine meetings with various Oasis Country Club members, either in person, via email chains, and teleconferencing calls or on Zoom. According to a December 9th email received by me from Coachella Valley Water District Non-Potable Water Operations Manager, Ms. Olivia Bennett, the Oasis Board-appointed Advisory Committee, called the Oasis Irrigation Committee, the Oasis Board members, a hired outside consultant, and even a non-privileged communication with legal representatives of the Oasis Country Club have conducted meetings with the CBWD over the past few years. Oasis Irrigation Committee was appointed by the Oasis Board with a charter to only study the golf course irrigation system replacement. The OIC was not asked to evaluate state mandates and cost impact for the replacement of the entire common area irrigation system, owned equally by all 662 owners at the Oasis Country Club. Ms. Bennett and Ms. Evans, who is no longer employed here, refused to appear at my invitation to independently meet with the Oasis members at an acceptable date and time, believing they were to be invited to an Oasis Town Hall Zoom hosted meeting on January 18th, 2022, which has now been postponed as of 5:09 PM last night to February 24th. They were disinvited to participate in the Oasis Town Hall by the Oasis Irrigation Committee. Thus, a five-page letter dated December 30th, 2021, was sent to CBWD Board Clerk Sylvia Bermudas for processing a public records request. Such a "citizen subpoena" will determine if certain Oasis members dissuaded the CBWD staff from appearing before the Oasis owners, who own equally common areas, including the golf course. Yesterday afternoon, the CBWD Board received a five-page letter articulating my legitimate concerns. I am appearing here today to respectfully seek the CBWD Board to order a member of the Water Conservation Communication Team, Ms. Bennett, and the General Manager to appear before the Oasis membership at the main clubhouse at a date and time acceptable to all parties. And we would appreciate this to be docketed as an agenda meeting, if it cannot be considered today, at the next available opportunity. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else wishing to speak?
I do not have any others in the boardroom, I believe, that are... that have submitted a request. I do have two individuals online. I believe one is a consultant, but I don't recognize the other. So if we do have somebody that is online on Zoom, if you could please use the raise hand feature, if you would like to speak in general public comment. Okay, I do not, so it does not appear we have others.
All right, so we are not aware of anybody else wishing to make public comment at this time. Thank you. Including online. If that changes, let me know. And we will have opportunities for public comment as we consider individual agenda items. So this brings us to the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar?
We have approval. I'll second.
All right, and I just want to give Director or Vice President Estrada an opportunity if there was something he wanted to pull. I'm not hearing.
You know, I... I... President Powell, there was a question on items, I believe it was... It was 10. It was, I think it was the SEQA guidelines. And maybe some of that was already answered. I did see some emails back and forth, but my general question about 10... Well, can we pull it?
So that... Is that an item on the consent calendar, or is that later in the agenda?
It's an action item.
Later.
That's later, right?
Okay. All right. I'm sorry, I thought it was in consent.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So we have a motion and a second. A roll call, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so that passed 5:0. And let's see, so this brings us to 8A. Public hearing, and there's... This... All right, so there's nothing here. So we originally had scheduled a public hearing regarding the input for redistricting of our division boundaries, and that will be continued to January 25th, 2022.
That is correct. We will renotice. I just wanted to make sure it was on the agenda in case somebody had questions or had any intent to attend, that we could clearly note that the hearing would be continued to the 25th and republished.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good clarity there. Written communications, we have four items listed in the packet. I believe that's everything, right?
That is correct.
And those have been too resolved and too pending at the staff level.
Mr. President, if I may, just for the record, I want to point out that there are no members of the public present here in the room to speak on the redistricting. It has been continued, but just for the record, there's nobody here that would have offered comments.
Correct. Or online.
So yeah, hopefully they'll show up at the... at the 20.
We worked with communications at the time. They updated a press release. I believe they did a Facebook post. We did not do a Facebook, but they updated the press release as well.
Good. Good, good. All right. Then 8... 9B. Informational reports. We have the fiscal year 22 budget versus actual report. Carrie, good morning.
Good morning. So the board action item in the quarterly financial report has the detailed information. But starting this fiscal year, we are adding a PowerPoint presentation, but it is up to the board's discretion if you want me to present it or if you just want to focus on specific items. So it's... Okay.
You know, I've already... I think I brought forward one question. I'm fine with it, with a very quick presentation.
Do you want me to go over the presentation?
Me as well.
Okay. Who does it... Sorry. Did I go to the next slide? Sylvia. Sorry.
Did we say we want the presentation, or maybe we don't even need it?
I don't need the presentation.
I don't think we need it.
Sorry.
I don't think we need it. No, saved by the bell.
Thank you.
I appreciate how you laid out the information, and yeah, I was able to to be comfortable with the presentation as is.
For the next one, it's the...
All right, so moving on. Then we have the annual comprehensive financial report. Go ahead.
So we actually have Nitin Patel, the auditor, to do the presentation, and I'm not sure if he's logged in already, so.
Mr. Patel, I believe, you are online, and I just moved you over to be a panelist. So you now have the ability to speak and present.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Again, Nitin Patel from Clifton, Larson, Allen. And I'm here to give you a short presentation on the independent auditor's report and certain communications to those in charge of governance. The independent auditor's report is contained in your annual comprehensive financial report, and it starts on page 28 of that report. In the first page of the report, we discuss that we've conducted the audit for the year ended June 30th, 2021. In the second paragraph, we discuss that these financial statements are the responsibility of management. In the third paragraph, we discuss the audit standards, and we use the audit standards generally accepted in the United States and also government audit standards. We believe that the audit evidence we have obtained is sufficient for us to express an opinion on the financial statements. On the second page of the opinion, we give the opinion, which is an unmodified opinion. Your financial statements are fairly present in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. After that, we do have an emphasis on matter. In the current fiscal year, we had to implement GASB statement number 84 for each treasury activities resulting in a restatement. And effectively, the restatement is just convert deposits into fund balance. After that paragraph, we discuss there's certain required supplementary information in your financial statements, which consists of the management discussion announced the pension liability and OPAP liability. We reviewed that information for consistency, but are not providing an opinion on that. Finally, under other information, we discuss there's supplementary information, there's statistical information, and there's an introductory section. We're not giving an opinion on the introductory section or the statistical section. We are giving an opinion on the supplementary information, and that is fairly stated in conjunction with the financial statement as a whole. So that concludes my comments on the opinion. We did issue a report on internal control of our financial reporting, and we had no items of material weaknesses to mention to you. And finally, the last item is the communication to those in charge of governance. It's a three-page communication where we discussed, one, the qualitative aspects of your accounting policies, which are described in Note 1 to the financial statement. That also discusses the restatement of net position that we had to utilize for the current year. After that, we discuss accounting estimates in your financial statements, which consists of the pension liability and the OPAP liability. We reviewed that information and found it to be consistent and reasonable in accordance with the professional standards. The district made all adjustments that were proposed to them. We did not have any difficulties in performing the audit. We did request that management give us representations related to the audit. And finally, we were not aware that your management consulted with any other CPAs are related to how to report any specific financial matters. That concludes my comments. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Don't have any.
I would... We would recommend, Mr. President, a motion just to receive and file for the audit. It's not absolutely legally mandated, but because it is the audit as opposed to simply an update presentation, we would recommend a motion to receive and file.
So, okay, go ahead. So entertain a motion to receive and file the audit.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks. So I'm just curious, does the... And this is either to the auditor or to staff. Does the audit team look at the investment portfolio at all and make any decisions about?
No, no. They only focus on the accounting relating to the investment portfolio. But they don't have any input regarding the actual decisions made on the allocation.
So just transactions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Fair enough.
President Powell, if there are no further questions. I do just want to take a moment to thank Nitin and his staff, as well as the finance staff. And really, this clean audit is in evidence of the work that's going on throughout the whole district. And I really appreciate everyone's diligence with following our procedures. And also recognize that this is a very simple presentation to this point, but there are hundreds of hours of work that went in behind this and closing the books and getting ready for the audit. I just wanted to acknowledge staff on that.
Right, yeah. I echo that. All right, is there a motion to receive and file the audit?
Yeah, I'd just like to say I completely agree with what you had to say, Jeff, and President Powell. It's hats off to the finance department and the audit team that came in and worked together to get a clean bill of health on the accounting portion of the district. And it gives me, you know, great comfort to see that we're a shining star in public accounting, so good for you. But that'll make the motion to accept and file the audit.
Second.
Thank you. The motion, a second roll call, please. Thanks, Jeff.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good, now it passed 5:0. Onto our action items. 10A, approve purchase of eight vehicles. Stuart Taylor, good morning. And disposal of nine vehicles.
Good morning. President Powell, Vice President Estrada, and distinguished members of the board. We are here asking you to approve the purchase of eight vehicles in the amount of $1,229,094 and the disposal of up to nine vehicles. It is recommended that the Board of Directors authorize the General Manager to purchase the following eight vehicles, which include two heavy haul tractors, five 15-yard dump bodies, and one F-750 with an eight-yard dump. Additionally, it's recommended that the Board of Directors authorize a contingency in the amount of $60,906 for a total requested authorization of $1,290,000. This request consists of the purchase of the eight vehicles noted above. The two heavy haul tractors and five 15-yard dump bodies will be purchased from Inland Kenworth via Sourcewell Contract at the cost of $347,062 and $785,825, respectively. By taking a strategic approach and refurbishing the 15-yard dump bodies, we are able to reduce capital expenditures by $30,000 per truck or $150,000 cumulatively. The F-750 eight-yard dump body will be purchased from the National Auto Fleet Group via Sourcewell Contract at a cost of $96,207. This vehicle will be gasoline-powered and replace two diesel-powered trucks at an additional savings of $23,793. CBWD has determined it is in the best interest to purchase the vehicles through the Sourcewell Cooperative and utilize Kepa auctions for auction services. CBWD has coordinated with our council regarding the purchase of heavy-duty diesel vehicles to ensure compliance with the South Coast Air Quality Management District Rule 1196. This rule requires the purchase of an alternate fuel vehicle or application for a technical and feasibility certification request, or TICR, which, if granted, allows the purchase of a diesel-powered vehicle. Subsequently, CBWD applied to SCAQMD for 12 TICRs to purchase 12 heavy-duty vehicles as outlined in our FY22 Motor Pool CIB. Working collaboratively with the SCAQMD, we received authorization to purchase seven of the 12 heavy-duty vehicles. As mentioned, we will replace two of the diesels with one gasoline-powered, leaving four trucks yet to address. We will continue to work with SCAQMD to resolve the remaining noncompliant vehicles, as well as any mitigation requirements. The fiscal year 2022 Motor Pool Capital Improvement Budget includes funding in the amount of $2,469,000. On September 14th, the Board of Directors approved four F-550 utility bed trucks and one DISC in the amount of $572,000. The requested action includes additional procurement of the eight vehicles totaling $1,290,000. The TICR approval has a requirement that we execute a purchase agreement within 90 days of the SCAQMD letter, which was dated December 3rd, 2021. Due to significant production delays, we are not confident that we will receive any of the aforementioned vehicles in FY22. However, with an approval today, we will get into the production queue with the eight additional vehicles and avoid further delay. Staff will monitor the production schedules closely, and will rebudget all delayed vehicles in FY23 Motor Pool Capital Improvement Budget. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I don't hear any questions. So is there a motion to approve 10A?
I'll make the motion to approve the item. I'll second.
Good. Roll call, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Passed 5:0.
Thanks, Stuart.
Yep, and then Dan Ruiz, good morning. So this is soliciting proof solicitation of bids for the Phase 1B and Lincoln Street for the project.
Yes, good morning, President Powell and board members. You've seen this project many times before. And so today's request is to approve solicitation of bids for Phase 1B, which you can see on the map. The design has been completed. The environmental work has been completed. We just received the draft agreement for the $7 million from DWR on Thursday, this past Thursday. So staff is currently reviewing that draft agreement. We're going to be making comments. So we feel we'll be ready in the coming weeks to put this project out to bid. It's got an estimated cost of approximately $10 million, and it includes a pipeline, 12-inch pipeline down Lincoln Street as well. And so we're also waiting for approval for funding from the State Water Resources Control Board. In fact, they're having a meeting on Thursday to review our funding request for the balance of funds for this project. So this is a very important milestone for us. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Yeah, could... Dan, could you summarize on that 10 million? Just like summarize, you mentioned DWR funds and State Water Resources Control Board funds, and some CBWD funds. How's that 10 million kind of poking out?
Sure, so for Phase 1B, which includes Lincoln Street, the Phase 1B 30-inch pipeline is going to be roughly about eight-ish million dollars or so. And the portion on Lincoln Street is going to be roughly about $2 million. Of course, pricing is very volatile right now. So we're thinking it's going to be about $10 million. And so with the $7 million, we need an additional $3 million. We have a funding request of $26 million with the State Water Resources Control Board, which should fund the remainder of this project and Phase 2 if the state agrees with our funding request. Which again, there's a meeting on Thursday where they'll be reviewing that. If there's any shortfall or gaps, we will look towards our WSBFC funds to make up that shortfall. So we feel obviously this is an important project for the community, and we're looking at various funding approaches, but we feel we should be covered.
Motion to approve.
I'll second if there's a motion.
I guess I made a motion. It was a little... I did. All right, and we have a second. I didn't use my words. Motion, a second. Roll call, please.
President Powell.
Aye.
Vice President Estrada.
Aye.
Director Bianco.
Aye.
Director Aguilar.
Aye.
And Director Nelson.
Aye.
Thank you. 5:0.
Passed 5:0. Thanks, Dan. And 10C. This is the adoption of local guidelines for the SEQA. William Patterson, good morning.
Morning, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Board members. This item here is an annual update to our CBWD local SEQA guidelines. We started a comprehensive update to SEQA guidelines in 2019. We prepared this update with BB&amp;K. And the main goals of this update are to provide additional references for specific provisions of SEQA that allow further guidance and supplemental authority, that updates to reflect changes in the Public Resources Code that occurred in the last year. It adds examples of projects that we've encountered in the last year that are qualifying for SEQA categorical exemptions and ministerial actions. And we're trying to ensure consistency in documenting those evaluations that we've made in the past. I know, Mr. Aguilar, you had a question. Did you receive the response that we provided?
I did.
Basically, you know, the main things that are occurring here are pretty minor updates. Say the largest change that we're seeing in this update is the requirement that the public review period for environmental documents begin and end on a business day. That's probably the largest, the significant change for CBWD in this update. There are a lot of edits that come into this document that are just part of the Public Resources Code that aren't really going to affect CBWD. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Yeah, Vice President Estrada, I think you had something.
Yeah, the only question I had was was if... Is there any... When we say local guidelines, are they really just state guidelines? Are they any different than state guidelines? Or are we just mirroring what the state allows?
They're a culmination of the state guidelines. We don't deviate from the state guidelines, but what we can... Uh, we, we, we don't deviate from the state guidelines, but we, what we can do is add clarifying language into our own guidelines and provide examples of CBWD's specific projects that help to clarify some of the interpretation that might be needed under SEQA.
And if I may, just, just real briefly, um, the law requires that each public agency have their own quote unquote local SEQA guidelines to implement the state law. And so what we do at Best Besson Krieger is that, uh, we go through any changes in the law, any changes that need to be made to local guidelines for all of our clients. We're not just going through yours page by page. And then we work with staff to tailor anything in particular to the district. So it's required that each public agency have their own local SEQA guidelines and then that they be reviewed and tailored to your local needs. So we, we do both of those things on an annual basis. Most of the time, as Will mentioned there, um, minor changes, but they are changes that need to be consistent so that when you do your SEQA compliance here at the district, you'll have all the forms and all the, all the, all the, all of the process in place so that you can do a lot of this on your own without having to consult with legal counsel and to make sure that they're in compliance with SEQA law.
Okay, and I, I did go through the red lines and I, it was, thank you for providing that. It was easy to kind of focus on what, what were, what the changes were. And I, I, I was glad to see the language added there on the, on the small water systems. Um, I thought that, um, that was good. And I just, no, I, I was trying to, uh, understand what Director Aguilar, uh, was, was, uh, thinking about when he, from an email that, that I saw he shared as it related to affordable housing and me not being too familiar with, um, with those, with those guidelines, uh, I was interested to know if his question was answered or, or what it meant, um, just, just because I was, I'm not familiar with it.
Well, Vice President Estrada, this is, uh, Director Aguilar. Um, I, I'm not sure if we shared the full response, um, with you that we received from staff, but I mean, for, for everybody else, um, I had raised a question about one of the attachments, uh, that talked about expedited review for affordable housing projects. And there was a statement in there that only projects that are a hundred percent affordable would qualify, uh, for that, for that review. So correct me if I'm.
Streamline review.
Right. So, um, uh, my, my point was just based on my experience that not every affordable housing project, particularly those that are involved with acquisition of existing facilities for rehab are a hundred percent affordable. So, um, but I, it was pointed out to me and I understand now that, uh, that's really a land use decision, which is, um, not within purview of our approval, but also that these guidelines mirror what the state has in place, so that we really don't have any ability to change those.
Yeah, that's correct. It's, it's a state guideline that's not subject to, for, you know, revision. And the lead agency on the development project, which is typically Riverside County or the cities, would make the determination of their environmental impacts and whether or not it applies, uh, applies, you know, for that, um, streamline review.
All right. So my question was answered, uh, answered, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the explanation, Director Aguilar. That helps me understand.
Thank you, all right. So with that, is there a motion to adopt the, uh, local guidelines?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval. Second?
There's a motion and a second, and, uh, roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Was it yes?
Both an aye.
Yes, thank you. Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Past five oh. Thank you, William.
Thank you.
Board member, general comments. Why don't we start with Vice President Estrada?
I have no comments.
Okay, go ahead, Director Nelson.
Yeah, I'll go next, thank you, uh, John. Uh, well, this, uh, this last December has turned out to be very wet and I've been appreciative, so I have a few numbers to rattle off in my, uh, the way I do when it's, uh, wet years. Um, so in NorCal, the, the eight station, um, index is up to a hundred and forty nine percent. Of course, that's, uh, the area of Lake Orville where our state water project comes from. Uh, the snowpack across the state is a hundred and thirty one percent and more importantly, it's, uh, fifty seven percent of the April first number, which is a good number. So we're still at zero percent towards the end of the month. Hopefully, the state water, uh, uh, DWR will come out with a new, uh, allocation for us where it's zero right now. So, uh, if we want to take bets, uh, my bet's, my bet's five percent.
Oh, we can do better than that.
We can do better than that. I, I would, uh, but if you look at, um, Orville is seventy eight percent of normal and it's , uh, filling, uh, they are releasing out of Folsom, which is a real small reservoir. Uh, so hopefully, um, we'll get some more storms coming in to build on the base and look good. Uh, Colorado River System, uh, is a hundred and thirty one percent of normal. Uh, and I think Janine, uh, Jones with DWR has indicated with the, the new, uh, uh, ridification of the west that we will need a hundred and forty percent of a normal runoff. And so when you look at the runoff in Colorado, it's looking to be right about normal right now. So, um, we can only hope that we get back up to normal after the second lowest year of the hundred year period. So, uh, very hopeful on that. Then I'd like to, um, congratulate, uh, Victoria Lort for being appointed to the federal Aqua Federal Legislative Committee. Good, good job. And, uh, and for Scott for taking on the additional responsibilities, uh, coming your way. Thanks for, uh, you know, being a team player and doing a great job in customer service and now some new responsibilities as well. So good for you, Scott. And, um, uh, with that, um, that's, it concludes my comments.
Thank you.
No good news. I, I have no comments, thank you.
I have no comments. All right. Yeah, no, I, you know, I'll just say, looking forward to a good twenty twenty two. I mean, maybe the hydrology is an indicator that's going to be a good year in a, in a number of different ways, so, um, I'll go with fifteen percent. I don't know. Maybe it's too late, maybe it's too late to get there.
All right, I like that, John.
I don't know, I'm gonna, gonna go wild on the prediction. Um, anyways.
I'm sorry, what was the wager?
Well, we're just betting for fun.
Yeah.
Um, this brings us to meetings and reports. We'll just go down the list. Uh, December seventh, Agua Caliente mediation meeting, that was the plenary, right? Yeah. Uh, and we were, a number of us were there, staff and directors, myself and Director, and Vice President Estrada, along with the team from, well, from everybody, DWA, the Agua Caliente, the United States. Um, you know, I, it's interesting. Seems like there's more, we're developing a little more tension between the principals and the consultants and lawyers, which maybe isn't, is the right thing to happen at this point in time, so maybe a good sign. Um, December ninth, Sultan, I don't know, Vice President Estrada, if you had any comments on that plenary meeting on the seventh?
No, I, I don't have any comments.
Thank you. Then Sultan Sea Authority on the ninth, Directors Estrada and Bianco. Director Bianco was not there.
Uh, let me see. I, I believe I was there. I think that was the meeting where we were, the Sanci Authority got, they, they started to meet in person again, so they, they held the meeting, I believe, at the, um, in Imperial County. And, uh, it was just the, the, the normal updates, um, nothing, nothing that I can recall as being too, too out of the ordinary. But, but I think that, uh, we're planning on starting to meet back in person. I don't know, uh, when we're going to meet or, or ask CBWD perhaps for the facility as, as the alternate place to meet. But my understanding was that at least, um, for the first months in, in the year, uh, the facility that would be used for Riverside County or, or, or on this side of, uh, of the sea would be the Desert Mirage High School. So, um, at least for the, maybe first two months, including this month and next month, uh, we, we, we would be meeting at the Desert Mirage.
All right, thank you. Uh, December ninth, the DVBA meeting, I, I did attend, that was their holiday, um, party at the Flattery Exchange. Interesting venue, by the way, in Palm Springs, but it's an outdoor venue and it had rained right before we got there. So everything was wet, but no business conducted, but it was a good networking opportunity. Uh, let's see, the thirteenth, Seven Basin States Principals, Director Nelson?
So that was, uh, held in Las Vegas, um, uh, the day, excuse me, prior to, um, the CRUA, um, event. And, um, it was a good opportunity for the two basins to, um, uh, kind of come together and relieve some of the tension that it's been building up between, uh, the two basins addressing the ten thirty, um, uh, reconsultation, uh, requirement that was, uh, um, triggered through the DCP process. So, uh, it was good conversation and, uh, it helped facilitate having a generally amenable CRUA conference.
Mm-hmm. Then Farmwater Coalition, same day?
Oh, yeah, so I, I missed that meeting because of that.
Don't worry. Then fourteenth through sixteenth, CRUA, and there were three of us there, I think, Nelson, Estrada and Powell. Um, you know, it was amazing how well attended it was. Uh, I mean, almost a thousand people were registered for this thing at Caesar's Palace and, uh, you know, I mean, kind of a big rollout of the five hundred plus plan. Um, it's going to be interesting to see how that develops. I don't know, I don't know, that, that's kind of my comments. I mean, yeah, my other comment would be they're going to meet at Paris Hotel next year, which is interesting. Um, yeah. No, I, there was a, I guess that's the same ownership as Caesar's, but they put us over there. Any other comments?
I'll, I'll be the last to comment, so if there are any other comments.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I'll just, uh, I'll just say that it, for me, it felt like it was, um, it was just, it was just a lot of bad news. And, but, but with, with kind of like a hopeful, um, you know, almost like this is our challenge to fix and, uh, you know, we can live up to the challenge and, uh, that's why we have the rules that were, that's why we have the agreements in place and, and we're, we're here now and they were, and, and they were, they were, they were made for, for this type of situation. So now we just, you know, we need to, we need to, um, live by them and, and hopefully, uh, try to, try, try to make the situation better and, and it was almost a challenge of, uh, we can all work together and, and we're, we're going to figure it out. And at least that was the sense that I got, kind of, uh, that there was, that there was going to be light at the end of the tunnel, I guess maybe is what I felt, but it was a pretty bad, uh, scenario.
Director Estrada, I, I think that that really captures the conference, uh, and that's a great observation. Um, uh, you know, there were a couple of, you know, uh, signing ceremonies that tried to put a positive spin on all the bad news. Uh, but I think, uh, you've captured, uh, you know, what people at the river, uh, are thinking is that, hey, we have to use these agreements now to implement, um, um, uh, the requirements to manage the, uh, the two, uh, reservoirs as well as the whole river. So, uh, it was encouraging to hear that the federal government would step up and match the Lower Basin's commitment of a hundred million dollars to match it with another hundred million dollars, uh, for conservation activities, uh, in the Lower Basin to, uh, facilitate the five hundred plus plan. Um, you know, Arizona has, uh, a hundred and sixty thousand acre feet of that wrapped up in a couple of, uh, tribal following programs, um, to go, so that, uh, that's in there. Uh, the, the federal government is stepping in to, uh, take over the Palo Verde program in twenty twenty two to, for system conservation, not for met water. So that's, uh, that's another forty thousand acre feet and, and there's been some identified as some extra conservation in the Imperial Valley for twenty five thousand acre feet. So there's a real good start on the five hundred plus plan and, um, it's going to be a work in progress, uh, over the next year and it'll be a lot of work. And, uh, don't be surprised if, uh, some programs pop up that, uh, CBWD might want to be interested in, uh, in, uh, participating in. So, um, so with that, um, there was, um, some legislation that was being put forth by the crit tribe, uh, to, for them to facilitate, uh, moving water, leasing water off of their, uh, property, uh, in the, um, in their lands on the California and Arizona side. Steve Abbott took a look at the, uh, at the legislation that, uh, is, uh, in Washington and said that it was non precedential to us. So, uh, that was a, uh, great review by him and we met with the tribe, uh, as, uh, the Colorado River Board to, um, to listen to their presentation and, um, be supportive of, of the legislation, which will in turn support, uh, uh, you know, system and, uh, state, uh, water supplies on the river. So, um, other than that, it was, uh, like Castle Lo said, it was a lot of bad news and has been tempered a little bit by this, uh, uh, late December storm. So, uh, I thought it was a, a challenging conference.
And, and also in there, we had the Colorado River Board meeting, which you touched on maybe a little bit there.
Yeah.
Appreciate. It was interesting to hear the presentations by each of the agencies at that meeting.
I like those December, uh, meetings at, uh, CRUA with the Colorado River Board because it, it's good to hear the other agencies and what, what they feel is important. And thanks for Robert, uh, and the team to put in our presentation together.
Right. Uh, let's see, December fifteenth, Zoom meeting with Supervisor Perez, Director Estrada.
Let me look here in my notes.
I believe that was an update for, uh, the county supervisor and staff about the progress on the various projects in the East Valley for, um, water and sewer.
Okay, is that the, um, is that, yeah, that's the meeting where, where we were joined by the Housing Coalition and, uh, they, they had a number of projects that they were trying to pencil out and we were just, I, we gave an, we gave an overview of, of, um, of our, of our IXTP, uh, project that we're, that we're working on that would open up some additional facilities in the Mecca area. And that ties into, um, a project that's being worked on in, in the Mecca area by the, by the Coachella, um, Housing Coalition. And we were trying to get a sense of schedules and, um, and so we, that's what we talked about.
Yes, sir, that's it.
Thank you. And we head on the seventeenth, the Sultan Sea Thirty, I'm not sure I understand this, personal ad hoc committee teleconference, is that personnel?
Yeah, that, I, that's supposed to be personnel.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, uh, we, we met, uh, we met, uh, uh, with our executive director, um, the Personnel Committee and, and, uh, talked about, um, uh, some of the needs for, for, um, for staff and, and just thinking about how to make some rearrangements. and, and just thinking about how to make some rearrangements. We don't have, we don't have a big staff. So thinking about how to morph some of those job descriptions and maybe how to increase staff, that's what we talked about.
Thank you. Then December 20th, we had a principals' meeting on the Agua Caliente litigation. So there were six of us there, tribal chair and vice chair, the, and then the DWA and CBWD president, vice president of each agency. And, you know, honestly, so that was our first meeting of just all the principals. I think we're going to meet again, but, you know, I think there's, I'm hopeful that we're making some progress. And I think we'll talk more about that in closed session. If you had any further comments?
I don't.
Yeah. Okay, good. December 21, I mean, you know, I almost think of our problems out there. That's one that's going to, I'm more optimistic about that than some of these other things, like getting water from the state. So, and now I'm more optimistic than you on the state thing. Director Nelson, whatever. Okay, so, and let's see, the 21st, Internal Sultan Sea Tech Working Group, Director Estrada.
Yeah, so, so the, there's been a number of, of groups created to try to tackle the North Lake project that the Salt Sea Authority is working on. I believe, I can't recall the names of each of the groups, but they're meant to kind of tackle different aspects of the project. I've, I've been added to this technical working group that I believe right now is kind of focused on, on the, on the water supply issue. And so we had a conversation to try to figure out how the Salt Sea Authority should continue to approach the Coachella Valley Water District or just to continue to have the conversations about water supply. And I believe that the main thing that came out of that was thinking about how to make the formal ask via, via a letter perhaps. So there should be a letter being, or at least the direction was that a letter should, should start being crafted with, with some sort of formal ask as to quantities and centered around Colorado River water. Because I believe if it, if it was anything other than Colorado River water, it doesn't seem that, that, that there would need to be any sort of ask to CBWD. So, so it is Colorado River water specifically. And so that, that letter should be being crafted. I don't, I don't know when it's going to arrive, but it is, that seems to kind of be where, where the thinking was going.
All right, thank you. Let's see, on the 22nd, I had a meeting with IID Director J.B. Hamby. He came up here to Coachella and, you know, we discussed a number of things. Second time we've met, you know, I did express my concern about something I didn't know anything about until recently, that IID had been working over the last several years to secure easements for their transmission lines that run over Torres Martinez land. And they just got those signed this year, or in 2021, that all are temporary easements that end at the end of the compromise agreement, which is to say that they will be trespassing in 2032, again, on land where their permanent assets exist. You know, I just, I don't understand those sorts of things. I made it clear to Ham, my view is that if we, speaking of Coachella Valley, had representation on their board and had some decision-making representation, that never would have happened. And this is happening right now. I mean, this happened in 2021. So it just seems like, and when you look at how many years it took for them to get those easements in place and signed with the tribe, you know, whoever's in charge, which is IID, needs to start right now to get the next phase of these things going, you know? They should be permanent easements. Anyways, it's, we discussed a number of other things, but I do think that that is a topic for the CVEC that they need to be made aware of. It's all public, by the way. Their documents are on the IID website. I didn't know anything about it.
Not good.
It's like poking you in the eye. I mean, it's like. Yeah. Whoa, they settled that, but only temporarily. So just another issue to add to the pile, in my view. Anyways, December 27th, CVEC mandatory training. All right, so I did, I just did the two-hour training for the harassment prevention for supervisors. 28th, water education for Latino leaders, teleconference, Director Estrada.
See here. Yeah, that was, that was just a conference call to, to talk about the visit that the group was, was going to make, starting January 7th to the 10th. And I was involved with them in, in helping put together a schedule. And it was a call to try to just make sure that everything seemed to, to be in order. And that's, that's what we talked about.
Thank you. And then the January 4th Environmental Assessment Committee, also Estrada.
Yeah, that's one of our regular EAC meetings. This one was to approve and authorize public review and comment for the Thousand Palms, draft environmental impact, report environmental impact statement. And it's a big project. I know we've been working on it for a long time. I, I, I don't have a sense of which one's bigger. This is bigger than the North India flood channels or about the same, but it covers a tremendous area, offers a lot of flood control for the Thousand Palms area. I'm not sure at this point of, of the totality of the budget or how we would build it in different phases. I understand we would start from the bottom and work our way up. But it's a good project. And that's what, that's what we talked about. We looked at the environmental. I'm looking forward to just getting more into the weeds of, of the budget and how we're going to pencil it out over, over the next few years.
All right, thank you. Are there any other meetings that we need to report on today?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I had one on December 1st. I as well did a discrimination and harassment training, the two-hour requirement.
Good. Any others?
With that, I'll move approval of the meetings reported on for, can you man? Is that good?
A motion, a second to approve, pretty, and so roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Past five oh. General Manager Report.
Yes, sir, just to kind of hit some high points, or perhaps some low points. On our COVID numbers, we've had 149 recovered qualifying cases. Currently, we have 30 current qualifying cases. Those are folks that are COVID positive. We've got 26 folks that have direct contact situations and there's a various number of those, but most of them are household member positives, where we require the employee to remain at home and then come back when they have a negative test. So we've currently got about 56 people off work. It's about 10% of our authorized full-time employees. When we get to vaccination status, we've documented proof of 414 people so far. We've got about 25 submitted exemptions, two medical, 23 religious. And as I think I provided back in December 8th, we are currently suspending any move to modify our COVID policies to require a vaccine mandate because of a court order that suspends the administration's rule or mandate that federal contractors get vaccinated. So more on that later. I'm sure you've been tracking the Supreme Court hearings on COVID, although the federal contractor mandate was not included in those. We'll wait and see what happens. The only other thing I have is just to remind folks that Monday is Martin Luther King Day and it is not a closed holiday for the district. We allow our employees to take a number of floating holidays. We have nine recognized holidays and we have a number of floating holidays and Martin Luther King is one of those. So employees are allowed to take the day for vacation, but it is not necessarily closing the district. That's all I've got, sir.
All right, thank you. Counsel report.
Yes, in regard to the fact that we have some tight deadlines for the closed sessions today, I will go ahead and pass.
Okay. Any departmental reports? No?
Yes, sir.
Beware of any. At this time, the board recessed in a closed session to discuss the items on the agenda. We will reconvene and report out of closed session following that consideration of those items. Reportable action? Jeff, would you handle that, please?
Yes, Mr. President, in the item for closed sessions under Section 13 in regard to Section 13G, and a motion by Director Powell, second by Director Nelson, and a five oh board vote, the board took action to deny the request of our lay claim and to have the appropriate notice sent therefor. Other than that, there was no other reportable action.
Thank you. And with no further business and hearing no objection, this meeting is adjourned.